Call to order, the voting session for September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The invocation will be given to us by First United Methodist Church Pastor Curtis McKee. The pledge of allegiance will be given to us by Commissioner Tim Mason. Please stand.
Let us pray. Worthy are you, O God, of all our praises. You're the author of life. You're the one who gives us order. And Lord, when I think of the word commission, I realize that every one of us, in the times of our birth, are commissioned in this great experience of life. And so, Lord, as we come to this commissioners meeting, these important matters, we pray for your spirit to be upon this room, upon everyone who's a part of this, upon each commissioner, all that takes place, may it be to your glory, your honor. Bless all the families of the commissioners as well. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now have the roll call, please.
Alfred, Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Fourteen present and none absent.
Thank you. Then we'll go to the approval of the minutes. Do I have a?
Go move.
Commissioner Ledford on the second. Any discussion? Hold the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We'll now go to the report from the county mayor. Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Um, we have a special guest, I'm gonna get him first in case he wants to head back. He got caught in traffic this morning, as you may have heard, there was a pretty bad accident on interstate northbound between here and Chattanooga, and he's been sitting down there in traffic for an hour, but thank goodness he left early. So Curtis Sutton, he's the director of the state nine-one-one board, he's here today to talk to us about our nine-one-one fees. As you recall, those are fees that's collected and goes to the state, and then they send them back to the district in some form or fashion, so he's here to explain to you how they do that, and hopefully some possible changes that they're looking at. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you commissioners for inviting me down here. Um, I met with Representative Raper and Senator Lowe last month and told them I would come down here and and answer any questions that you all may have about the nine-one-one fee. I know that you have some concerns. Might help to give just a little bit of a history about the nine-one-one fee. Um, so back in twenty, but prior to twenty-fourteen, uh, you all received local nine-one-ones fees, uh, on landlines, and then the state received wireless fees, and then they sent back wireless fees to the local nine-one district. Uh, in twenty-fourteen, all of that was changed, the rate was set at a dollar sixteen for all technologies, and all of that went to the Department of Revenue, and now the Department of Revenue sends that money to the state board, the state nine-one board, which I work for, and then we send it back to the nine-one districts based on a formula that, uh, the, that was created in the statute. Your formula is basically, uh, you got the highest of twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, or twenty-twelve, uh, or, uh, the average of that, whichever one was higher, when, when the law was changed in twenty-fourteen. In twenty-twenty, uh, the rate was raised from a dollar sixteen to a dollar fifty. Um, and, uh, the, my, my state board, uh, championed that, and we took it to the legislature, they approved it. Of course, that was right before COVID hit, and all sorts of inflation went up and everything like that, so that dollar fifty didn't quite go as far as we thought it was gonna go. Um, but, uh, so in, right after twenty-twenty, uh, or before twenty-twenty, you all, uh, your nine-one district here was getting about one-point-four million dollars from the state funds, uh, now you're getting just over two million dollars. The problem, though, uh, as I was talking to Mayor Davis about, is that it's, it's kind of remained flat since that time, so, uh, it started out about one-point-nine, now you're just right over two. Um, my board, uh, met last month, um, and, uh, they have tasked our staff and our policy committee, as well as our financial study committee, in taking a look at the nine-one-one rate, uh, not the nine-one rate, but the nine-one distribution formula. Uh, so we've had a ton of folks come to Tennessee, we've had a lot of population increase. Uh, some counties and districts have really seen a huge population increase, and, um, uh, the distribution may not be as, uh, as fine-tuned as it should be now. So we are starting that process. Uh, the policy committee will be meeting tomorrow, and then we are working on, uh, getting our financial study committee to meet, uh, either next month or in November. Uh, so we're starting to take a look at it, but I did wanna come down here, uh, and answer any questions that you all may have about the nine-one fee, about the nine-one surcharge, uh, any concerns that I can take back to either one of those committees or my board, uh, so I'll just, if, if you don't mind, I'll see if you guys have any questions.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind, uh, turn your, uh, red light on when you're speaking, so everyone can hear Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I appreciate you coming down and chatting with us. I, um, in studying the nine-one-one fee over the last couple of years, one of the questions I had was, um, what percentage of the money you collect stays in Nashville? I guess, I'd call it admin fee, what have you, if it's a percentage or a certain amount, how's that working?
So we have, we have a small staff, uh, of seven people, including myself, but we do pay for the NG nine-one network, as well as an online training platform that all of your telecommunications can access for free, uh, and then we have some slight overhead, but most of, about eighty-nine to ninety percent of all the money that we take in goes back out to the local nine-one district.
Eighty-nine to ninety percent comes back, so ten percent admin fee out of the millions of dollars for seven people?
Well, I mean, that, so there's a, there's an NG nine-one-one component there, uh, but, and that doesn't come back, it may not come back directly, so it may come back in, in the form of a grant or something along those lines, but, uh, so it doesn't all come back in just the, just the, uh, base funding that you get bi-monthly. Um, but, uh, we, we have a very, very small overhead.
So one of the things that concerns me is, uh, I guess, um, correct me if I'm wrong, is the restrictions. In other words, years ago, we talked about this, um, I was told that the money coming back to the, um, counties, if you will, 'cause not all nine-on-ones are the same, from what I understand, some counties,
That's correct.
they still have, I guess, the sheriff's department do the dispatching and whatnot. We centralized, as with an agreement with the city, which, to me, is efficient. Um, but you only want, I said, not you, but the nine-one, it can only go to certain things, um, not salaries or stuff like that. I guess my question is this, why even put any restrictions on the nine-one-one fee when you, when you send it down to the nine-one-one center?
So we, we have what's called revenue standards, we were chartered with doing that when the state board was created, and we have three different categories, required uses of nine-one revenue, uh, which are things that, it's primarily equipment, uh, so you have to have something to receive the calls, you have to have orders, uh, we just added cybersecurity to that requirement, uh, uses. Then we have permissible uses, which are things you can pay for, uh, that you don't have to, and then we have prohibited uses. Prohibited uses are things like alcohol and presents and things like that.
Sure.
Uh, the, the prohibited uses, uh, I mean, the, uh, permissible uses would allow for salaries to be paid. Uh, the key, though, is, is if it's in the operation of the district, and the, the law actually states that in a couple of different places. Uh, so if, if you're employing the folks that do the call-taking or dispatching, then you can pay for their salary, uh, because that would be in the operation of the district, but as you pointed out, not all districts operate the same. So I'm in Wilson County, that's where I live, they dispatch for some entities, but they don't dispatch for others, they transfer those calls, and so they could not pay for the things, uh, for those entities that they transfer to. Uh, so if, if we're talking about radios, they couldn't pay for radios if they transferred to Mount Juliet PD. Uh, but if they, if they dispatch for, uh, Wilson County EMA, then they could pay for radios and things like that, and they can pay for the dispatchers that actually, uh, dispatched them.
So when you guys raised the rate, it, it, the rate was for both landlines and wireless, right?
That's correct.
I mean, so still have a landline, you still pay a nine-one-one fee, and that rate went up as well?
Right, everything's at a dollar fifty right now.
So when, at the dollar fifty, when you guys proposed that and the legislators approved it, did you have a revenue projection of when you went from a dollar sixteen to a dollar fifty of how much new revenue you would have and how that would affect the counties?
We did, so we projected it would be thirty-two million dollars, uh, additional, and I think it came in.
Yearly, right?
I'm sorry?
Yearly, annually?
Yes, annually. Um, no, I'm sorry, thirty-six million dollars, and, um, with the population increase that we did not anticipate, it came in at, uh, last year at about forty-two million dollars. So we're about six million dollars more than what we actually.
So your projection was thirty-six and the actual was forty-two?
Right. I mean, if, so going from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three, fiscal year twenty.
That's right. I guess, last word, uh, one of the concerns, I guess, and, uh, again, I appreciate you coming down, is how, how do you guys get audited? We get audited by the comptroller's office, those numbers that you just, how do you guys get audited, or who audits you?
So we, we go through a sunset audit, just like every state agency, every, uh, I think, we, last time, we got four years, so every state agency, uh, goes through a process that the legislature decides whether or not they wanna continue with that agency, and, and it's called a sunset, uh, hearing. We went through a sunset hearing, they gave us four years, but there's an audit that goes along with that. Now, as far as the fee, uh, because that goes to the Department of Revenue, we are not, um, auditing, uh, telecommunications companies, so we're not auditing AT&amp;Ts or anything like that. Uh, the Department of Revenue, that's their responsibility, and that was the thinking when, uh, the legislature moved, uh, the collection from the state board to the Department of Revenue, uh, they did that because they thought the Department of Revenue would be, uh, better suited to take a look at those numbers and make sure that those companies are remitting properly. Uh, so we don't, we don't audit the, we don't audit the amount of money that's coming in. Um, that's, that's the purview of the Department of Revenue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes, sir. How, how do they formulate that off the area code? Is that the way they collect the money?
So it, it's, uh, it's by address, so I, the question we get all the time is, well, we got people coming in from California and everywhere else, uh, how do we know that they're paying the fee in Tennessee? So if they, if they have an address that they get a bill at in Tennessee, regardless of what their area code is, then they will still pay the dollar fifty.
My question, thank you.
Mr. Winters.
Do, does the dollar follow every platform that's in our house? I have three phones in my house.
Yes, sir.
So I'm tax three, right?
Yes, sir.
So with that increase of funds, our concern is why our money didn't come up during that time? Because we would've thought, just as a layman, we thought if each one, each of us appear have three more than we had before, or two more we had before, and those funds come up, why did the funds not come here? So when a gentleman stood where you stood as part of the, our board, saying they didn't have enough money, then we were done, we were, we were finished with our budget, and we didn't have funds for them, so they needed to add somebody else. That's, that's really why we asked you to come, someone representing your office to come. How that could increase that much and still coming down to us, it didn't, didn't seem like it, it moved that office.
Right, so it, uh, your numbers have been kind of flat, like I said, um, in twenty-twenty, you were about one-point-four, you jumped up to just under two, and now you're just over two, so it's gone up a little bit, but probably not a lot. Um, and one of the things to understand is that it doesn't, it doesn't come back to the jurisdiction, so everything that's collected here goes to the Department of Revenue, and it, just like every other county in the state, and then that's divvied out through the formula that the legislature put in back in twenty-fourteen. And that's, that's what we're trying to take a look at.
I guess the question we have is, uh, do we get our fair share back? You know, when it goes to Department of Revenue, we understand that there's a lot of hands reaching for those dollars, and are we getting the amount that we should be getting when it goes to the Department of Revenue? You're sure that that happens?
Now, I, I think that that's what we need to take a look at, um, and I think that, uh, uh, it's not just, not just here, it's, it's everywhere in the state, is, is everybody getting what they need to get, based on population and everything else? Um, population's a component, uh, you know, when, when you had your, uh, landline fees coming directly to the nine-one district, um, those could be set as high as three dollars for business lines or a dollar fifty for residential lines. Uh, some, I don't know what Bradley Counties were set at, but some of them were set very low. Um, and so if you were at sixty-five cents for residential, then maybe a dollar for businesses, and then you have a county over next to you that was at three dollars and a dollar fifty, well, that was what was baked into those, uh, formulas, that distribution formula that the legislature put forward, and so you may not have gotten, you, you may have been at a disadvantage by trying to keep your rates low, being good stewards of your money, uh, you may have been at a disadvantage when those, when that formula was created, and I think that's something we need to take a look at.
Great, thank you.
Roger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, three questions for you, um, just listening to what, what you were kind of saying. Um, one of the questions is about remittance from AT&amp;T and Verizon, and I know that goes to, to, not to your office, but to the other office. What is that timeframe for the remittance? Do they have to remit every single year, or do they get to be able to remit every three years, or what is that kind of timeframe?
So basically, you'll get a bill, they'll charge you for the dollar fifty on any, any device that you have, you'll send it to them, then two months later, they send that over to the Department of Revenue, so it's every two months.
So every two months, money should be coming into the state from AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, all the other places?
That's correct.
And the Department of Revenue is the one who is, and the comptroller, I would say, is the one who is over-determining if they are paying their correct share every single time?
Yes, we, we've actually, uh, had that question to the Department of Revenue, what they said is they will audit, when they audit a telco for anything else, they'll also audit the nine-one fee, so they're not going in there and doing special audits just on the nine-one fee. That's something that we didn't quite understand when they first did it, we had a representative of the Department of Revenue come to one of our meetings and explain how they were doing it.
You made a comment that it started out with just landlines, then it went to cellphones. Now we live in a world where every device that we have has the opportunity for, um, cellular needs, watches, wearable devices, iPads, all that, is all of that under the technology law to, that they are getting charged as well?
Yeah, the way that Tennessee, Tennessee wrote their law very smartly when they did it. Uh, any device that is able to connect a caller to, by dialing the digits nine-one-one, so if, if your watch, independently of your phone, uh, has a SIM card in it or a virtual SIM card in it, uh, and it can dial nine-one-one itself, then it should have a fee associated with it. Uh, now, I have not looked into that in some time.
Okay.
Uh, my iPad can do that.
Sure.
And I, I'm pretty sure this iPad has a dollar fifty attached to it.
My, my, my concern is, is kind of like the rest, the rest of everybody else speaking, is, is when we look at our flat numbers, and especially over the past five years, everyone, for the most part, everyone in this county, the majority of people in this county are, are using wearable devices, like watches, um, most everyone is having tablets that they carry around with them all day long, and a lot of these devices have that nine-one-one fee associated, so it, it's concerning that we see a, really a flat kind of line in funding that we're getting, but know that more people are using these types of devices. Um, in my household, we've got four iPads, four watches, five phones, and we're, yeah, and a landline and all these things, but our numbers are staying flat, but we're, we're spending as a county more money, we have more people moving in here, um, and obviously people are using, and I, I appreciate Commissioner Gilbert asking about how is it, is it done? Um, my, my concern is, is, is because we do have more people moving in here from out of state or from other counties and other towns, and businesses as well, um, so I, I, I'm really curious to see what this process is that you said will happen next month in November. My last question that I have for you is, you mentioned it started at a dollar sixteen, moved to a dollar fifty, and you said that number was kind of, didn't seem like it was enough, are, are you guys looking at moving that number up again from a dollar fifty?
Uh, no, we're not looking at that right now.
Okay.
Uh, what we are looking at is the distribution model, uh, that may, uh, be part of it in the future, but right now, that's not something that we are looking at, raising that rate.
Okay.
We, we've, we've, like I said, we estimated it was gonna be thirty-six million dollars and it actually came in at forty-two.
Sure.
Uh, so we are above projections now for the dollar fifty. The problem isn't necessarily the revenue, the problem is how far that dollar goes now.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Not far.
Yeah, everything's increased, I don't know if y'all have tried to buy a car lately, but it's awful. Uh, nine-one equipment is basically the same way, uh, so every, everything has increased in, in, uh, va, not in value, but in price due to inflation and things like that, so, uh, uh, it, the revenue, uh, is where we wanted it, but the costs have gone up.
Sure.
Um, so it, that may be something that we have to take a look in the future, but we're, we are not looking at raising that right now, no.
Thank you for your time, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
It's all out, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. No one else, let me put my two cents worth in, and, and that would be there, it would, to me, it appears that there's a fox loose in the chicken coop here. Uh, we've been flat-lined, basically, on our revenue, our population in the county has grown exponentially, and there's more and more of these things that, watches and what have you, iPads, and you're giving the benefit of the doubt to your office, running a tight ship, comptroller's office or treasury, whoever running a tight ship, then we get back to the source, and that would be these phone companies, not doing their job, they're not being audited, they're not turning their money in, that's the only rational explanation I can come up with. They're not pumping the revenue to you, consequently, we're not getting it, but everything else is going up. So I'll leave that thought with you.
Thank you. Um, what I can, what I can tell you is that we will, we will have ongoing conversations with the Department of Revenue about that. Uh, we ask them to come in every year and tell us where they're at on any audits that they've done, and they agreed to do that, so I think that they will be back in February, when we have our February meeting. Uh, so we will certainly, um, certainly pass that sentiment along, and, uh, uh, hopefully, we'll get some good information from them.
Appreciate you very much. Anyone else have any questions for the gentleman?
Mayor.
If everyone else is through, uh, a question, then a couple of comments, Curtis, and we do appreciate you coming down. Um, eighty-nine percent goes back to the local districts. In dollars, how much is the state board retaining for the NG network?
The, uh, right now, 'cause we're doing a build-out, um, our monthly, I call it our monthly phone bill for AT&amp;T, which is NG, is about a million dollars a month.
The key of what he said here, first of all, we did have a jump in revenue three years ago, so don't go back five. Three years ago, when we raised the rate, we had a jump. If you go back to twenty-fourteen, what we learned was the rate was set arbitrarily too low, they, that's what they thought the base rate should be. We came to the conclusion that it was too low, and that's why we had the rate increase, from my perspective, in twenty-twenty, I guess it was, and the revenue did jump up at that time. So the other part that hasn't been fixed is what they say they're studying now. The state set the rate at a dollar sixteen, which was too low, but they also set the formula of how the distribution would work. All right, we got, with their approval, we got the rate corrected, but they've never addressed the formula distribution, and that's what he's referring to there with the study. If they will go ahead with that and address that distribution formula, that's why all those watches that we have here are going somewhere else. Now granted, there's probably some of those not collecting. In twenty-fourteen, we also turned it over to Department of Revenue because they're pretty mean about collecting money. We thought they would collect more, used to, it came to the local districts. And to give you an example of how that was happening, we had lawsuits with twenty companies, we, Bradley County nine-one-one had lawsuits with all these companies, and we won those lawsuits, many of them settled out of court, because they were not paying their, what they were supposed to be doing, we proved that. So when the law changed, we said, let Department of Revenue handle it, they're mean, they'll get the money. I have to assume they're getting a lot bigger percentage of it than we were, 'cause we, we didn't have means of doing all those things. So I think the revenue's up, probably still some of that's happening, but again, they've never addressed the distribution formula. And if you say anything to your legislatures, encourage them, because that'll be a state thing, the state legislature has to address that, they're the ones that set that formula, if I understand it right, not the state board. So if they will address the distribution formula, and they'll keep pushing the Department of Revenue to collect, uh, it's not going to the state, so the Department of Revenue might not have their heart in it, I don't know, 'cause it's money they're gonna pass on to us, but their job is to collect what they're supposed to collect, so if they will keep pushing them to collect, and the state will look at addressing the distribution formula, if you look at, when he says it's flat, one-point-nine in twenty, one-point-nine in twenty, well, in twenty-one, one-point-nine in twenty-two, and then this past year, it went up to two, so it's been really flat every year after the rate increase. And that's, he's heard this millions of times, but that's why we're saying, guys, where's it going? It's not coming here, and it should be. I think most of it's in the formula, so if the state will follow through and seriously address that, I think that, that would, it would be corrected. See, at the end of the day, they require us to have a balanced budget. And if our revenues are flat, how in the heck are we supposed to have a balanced budget? And we may have money in the bank, a fund balance, but they don't even, we've got, we're supposed to have a balanced budget. Now, we can get by being in the red three years, I believe it is.
That's correct.
Um, and usually, money will come in at the end of the year, and we'll get back in the black, but this year, we're budgeted to be in the red, and we were last year, but we ended up in the black. So, uh, the state revenue's not been growing for some reason, and hopefully, they'll get to the bottom of it, and that's the same thing you, you've already said, I realize, but, uh, I hope the state board pushes them to continue doing this, because it is definitely needed. It may hurt some counties, I don't know or care, but if we're growing, we want the growing money, uh, and I think that's only fair. Now, you will also hear the, but when you travel through those rural counties, you want your nine-one-one to work. Yeah, that's back to the NG and all these other things, but we still should get what we're supposed to do, whenever they require us to have a balanced budget, start with. So it is a, a problem, not as bad as it used to be, a lot of corrections have been made, but it's still a problem, because we all agree, we're not getting what we should be getting in our community. Uh, having said that, thank you, we appreciate you coming, and hopefully, you have better, uh, luck going back to Chattanooga, but.
Hope so. Thank you all for inviting me, anytime that, uh, you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out to me.
and we won those lawsuits. Many of them settled out of court because they were not paying their, what they were supposed to be doing. We proved that. So when the law changed, we said, let Department of Revenue handle it. They're mean. They'll get the money. I have to assume they're getting a lot bigger percentage of it than we were because we, we didn't have means of doing all those things. So I think the revenue's up, probably still some of that's happening, but again, they've never addressed the distribution formula. And if you say anything to your legislatures, encourage them because that'll be a state thing. The state legislature has to address that. They're the ones that set that formula, if I understand it right, not the State Board. So if they will address the distribution formula and they'll keep pushing the Department of Revenue to collect, uh, it's not going to the state, so the Department of Revenue might not have their heart in it. I don't know, because it's money they're going to pass on to us. But their job is to collect what they're supposed to collect. So if they will keep pushing them to collect, and the state will look at addressing the distribution formula. If you look at, when he says it's flat, one point nine in twenty, one point nine in twenty, one twenty-one, one point nine in twenty-two, and then this past year it went up to two. So it's been really flat every year after the rate increase, and that's, he's heard this millions of times, but that's why we're saying, guys, where's it going? It's not coming here, and it should be. I think most of it's in the formula. So if the state will follow through and seriously address that, I think that it would, it would be corrected. See, at the end of the day, they require us to have a balanced budget. And if our revenues are flat, how in the heck are we supposed to have a balanced budget? And we may have money in the bank, a fund balance, but they don't even, we've got, we're supposed to have a balanced budget. Now, we can get by being in the red three years, I believe it is.
That's correct.
Um, and usually money will come in at the end of the year and we'll get back in the black, but this year, we're budgeted to be in the red. And we were last year, but we ended up in the black. So, uh, the state revenue's not been growing for some reason, and hopefully they'll get to the bottom of it, and that's the same thing you, you've already said, I realize, but, uh, I hope the State Board pushes them to continue doing this because it is definitely needed. It may hurt some counties. I don't know or care, but if we're growing, we want the growing money. Uh, and I think that's only fair. Now, you will also hear there, but when you travel through those rural counties, you want your nine one one to work. Yeah. That's back to the NG and all these other things, but we still should get what we're supposed to do whenever they require us to have a balanced budget start with. So it is a, a problem, not as bad as it used to be. A lot of corrections have been made, but it's still a problem because we all agree, we're not getting what we should be getting in our community. Uh, having said that, thank you. We appreciate you coming. Hopefully you have better luck going back through Chattanooga, but.
Hope so. Thank you all for inviting me. Anytime that, uh, you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out to me. If you'd like for me to come back, I'm happy to do that. Um, so I'm, I really appreciate you all having me down here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And his sidekick, Jim Tracy, was, uh, here earlier. He got caught in traffic, Jim Tracy. Many of you remember Jim Tracy? What did he run for? Governor?
Uh, he ran for Congress.
Congress, okay. Uh, but he's back with the Department of Commerce now.
Commerce and Insurance.
And nine one one falls under Department of Commerce. So Jim Tracy was here earlier, but he had to leave to get on to another one, especially after hearing about all the wrecks between here and Chattanooga, so he wasn't able to join us today, but we thank you for being here.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna take my leave if that's okay with you.
Certainly. We appreciate your coming. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, you have in front of you, and we didn't necessarily need to copy all those bonds, but I didn't want someone saying, I, I haven't seen them. But, um, we used to have to do bonds for elected officials in various departments, and most all of those are covered by insurance now. EMA is under a different insurance thing, and we still have to bring their bonds to you for approval, and so those that are in front of you, that's what they are, and I would respectfully ask for someone just to approve those bonds so they'll become part of the minutes and they'll be official then.
Commissioner Hughes will make a motion. Commissioner Thompson, second. Any discussion? But, uh, let me ask one question, Mayor. Uh, what about the county commissioners? I don't, on that list, where, uh, everybody's covered by the state, including the constables, they omitted the county commissioners. Do we still have ourselves covered?
I guess the political answer is they've always done such a great job that they've, the state's never seen fit to require bonds of them. I, I don't know. I've been asked that before, and I don't know why there's no bonds. It's not one of them that's required, is all I know.
That's fine. All right. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alfred?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Uh, you have to admit, that was a good political comeback. You also have in front of you, uh, Archives Committee. I have one appointment that is expiring, uh, later this month. Uh, Tommy Ledford, I'm asking to reappoint to the Archives Committee. Respectfully ask for your confirmation.
Commissioner Winters, do I have a second? Commissioner Hughes on the second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alfred?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And the only other thing I have is your septic repair program update. Uh, the RCND, who had eighty-nine signed contracts, has now completed seventy-two, up two since the last report. And we had eighteen signed contracts, and we've completed twelve of those, up one since the last report. That's all I have. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I got a question. Uh, we've had, uh, some people that was under this, got the septic tank repaired, and the contractors that came out has not fixed their yards back. And I've, I've, I've seen some of them in pretty, pretty, pretty pitiful shape. And, uh, so what can we do about not paying them until the work is done?
Well, um, they have to verify that the work has been done, and I would, if it was my yard, I wouldn't verify it's been done until they've done it, which would be fixing the yard back.
That's right.
That's between, you know, we don't involve, we're not the ones going out and getting those contractors. It's just that when they file the papers saying it has been done, we've paid our twenty percent. Now here's the bill for your eighty percent. So we don't have anything to do with that part of it, but I would make sure I didn't pay my twenty percent, and I didn't turn it into the county to be paid until they had finished the job.
Was that twenty percent paid upfront or after the job's done?
Well, they might pay the twenty percent upfront. I don't know, but they should definitely not tell us the project is done and ready to be paid if it's not done.
Okay. All right, we have, we have some like that. It's, uh, it's been left in pitiful shape, so I didn't know what we need to do about that. If they've already paid it, I don't guess there's nothing they can do, is it?
Well, hopefully, have they already turned it into us to pay also? I mean, uh, it's hindsight there, but I would never do that until they were finished because they're not going to come back if you pay them a lot of times.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gilbert, please.
It's RCND, they would be the one that would be over getting them to go out and pay it, right? I mean, go out and do their.
It's according to which program these particular people are in. If they were in that first bunch, then that paperwork goes to them saying it's ready to be paid, and they pay it. Or if it's in ours, they send it to us saying it's ready to be paid, and we pay it. But either way, it's signed off by somebody at that point.
So we haven't got a report in a while actually showing which yards is, how many people has done, been done. You haven't turned a report into us. You know, we used to get the reports.
Well, we only get the numbers. We haven't, uh, but, I mean, I gave you seventy-two out of eighty-nine are done. That's all we know. They give us weekly numbers on, on that.
They had actually used to have each week which one, and they had yotted them out, which one they had done.
That's, that's true. You're right. Uh.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know which ones not been done to where you could actually, because we don't want them to run over at the end of the year.
Oh, I, I agree, and I'm afraid, hopefully they won't. They're down to seventeen now, so maybe not. We can request that they do one of those reports if you want us to.
If you would, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you better make sure that that's part of the agreement to, uh, finish that work, to finish the ground up. When I had my septic tank done in seventeen, that was not a part of it. Uh, going through and straightening all that land back up, I had to pay three hundred more dollars to get them to come out and level all that up, so better make sure that's part of the agreement, to fix it up, because I remember sitting right here and listening to those guys. Seems like I remember hearing them say, uh, that they put the lines in and because the land has to settle, of course, once you get all that in, and I didn't hear them say anything about coming back and leveling that property also. It might be something you want to check with the, the company that actually put the field lines in.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to welcome Chamber of Commerce Mike Griffith, uh, Su- uh, Scholes, Susan Willcutt, and Chuck Flashman, Representative Flashman's, uh, Assistant, Greasy Shamblin. We'd like to welcome you here. And at this time, we'll go to the consent agenda. Do we have a Commissioner Goins, Commissioner Slater? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alfred?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We'll go to the reports from committees and our districts, and I'd like to, I think you already know you have a listing of the twenty-three, twenty-four committee assignments in front of you, and, uh, would you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you would, please, if there's no objection, if you have this document submitted in the minutes of the meeting, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll start on our left. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Contrary to my reputation, all is well in the sixth district. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll make, we'll note this as a matter of record. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Chairman. Everything is well in the sixth district. Um, we did have a tire, uh, take back on Saturday at the sheriff's office through KAB. We had thirteen volunteers, forty-seven household representatives, eleven have recycled or tried to recycle tires at the landfill before, and we took in two hundred and sixty-four tires at the event, and, and just to wonder what two hundred and sixty-four tires, I think it's not that many, but it was a sixty-foot roll-off, if you can imagine that, and then probably half of another one. So a lot of tires took back on Saturday. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Slater?
I'd like to congratulate Charleston Elementary, Michigan Avenue Elementary, Parkview Elementary, and Taylor Elementary for being recognized as a TVASS Level Five Growth School for their exceptional academic growth during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. You might ask, well, what is a Level Five mean for those schools? A Level Five means that there is significant evidence that students have made more growth than they expected to make during that school year. So hats off to the students and administrators at those schools for, um, continuing to see that our children's needs are met each and every day. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goins, please.
This district's doing well.
Commissioner Thompson?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to just, uh, say what Commissioner Slater said there. Those schools, uh, some of them in our district and, uh, are in our district, and, uh, in fact, I think Taylor come out number one there, and, and, and I was surprised, uh, it really surprised me, and I was happy that it did. And, uh, so I'm glad to hear that about our schools, especially in our district. Uh, next of all, Mr. Chairman, uh, the Building and Land Committee met last week and voted a few recommendations for this commission. Number one, first, we voted five to zero to recommend asking the county attorney to take steps to convey the property along South Lee Highway in front of Bradley High School to the Board of Education. The property which is maintained by the school system is the area in front of the school where they play soccer and the property that includes central office. Mr. Chairman, I place this recommendation in form of a motion.
Commissioner Winters on the second, open for discussion. Be in no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Alfred?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we also considered an offer to purchase twenty-seven, uh, to purchase twenty-seven currently unused acres at the Urban Vine Road Recreation Park. After much discussion of the potential use of the property and the usability of the property, the committee voted to recommend the commission to not deem the property surplus and to not sell the property. Mr. Chairman, I place this in recommendation in form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Goins on the second, open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Alfred?
First of all, I'd like to make one comment on that situation. Uh, if you'd let me before we start voting.
You, you, you got the floor, sir.
Just for this doesn't come up again later on in the future. There was some little research done on that property. If you're, none of us, well, some of us may be old enough to remember, but that property, uh, as a recreational park received LWCF grant funding in nineteen eighty and eighty-four to acquire and develop the park. Grant requirements included the following language. Property acquired or developed with LWCF assistance shall be retained and used for public outdoor recreation. Any property so acquired and/or developed shall not be worth, worldly or partly convert, conve- converted to other than public outdoor recreation use without the approval of the National Parks Service. So therefore, I don't think we even need to discuss selling that park in the future or anytime soon without through that situation. With that, I'll say yes.
We're saying yes to not selling, right? At what we're.
Yes to not selling.
Right, okay. I also say yes.
Blake?
We're in vote. We're not in discussion.
Well, he had already asked for the vote, so.
Yeah.
Collins?
I'd, I'd want to clarify, ask a clarifying question. Can I do that? Is that possible? Mr. Chairman, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
Not to muddy the already muddy waters, but are we, i- is this a vote to s- are we voting to sell this again, or is this a yes or no to?
This is a, a, a yes vote would mean that we are not going to sell it, and no vote would mean that we.
But procedurally, do we not have to put it in surplus first before we sell it? Is that correct? So we would have to go to surplus before we take a vote to sale or to accept a bid, correct?
Um, yes, you would, but the recommendation for the committee, and I, I, I knew this was going to get co- complicated because we're doing the, the negative here. The recommendation from the committee was not to surplus the property. So a yes vote is to keep that recommendation in place, which would be, so a yes vote is to not surplus. A no vote would be to reject that recommendation, and then essentially, I guess, we would start over at that point. So a yes vote is to not surplus the property. But you are correct that that's the first step is to surplus the property.
Thank you. I, I don't. Yeah.
Go ahead.
No.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So since Mr. or since, uh, Commissioner Alfred brought up the point that he brought up, may I ask a question related to that?
Certainly.
Crystal, does that mean that that property can never be sold?
I quite frankly don't know anything about what he was talking about, so I, I, I can't answer that right now. I don't know anything about nineteen eighty-four grants, so I, I can't answer that question. At least not today.
No.
Your votes, no, is that right? Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
No.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? It's eleven in favor and three opposed.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we also considered an offer to purchase property, a portion known as old waterable to a property. U Street, Alton Park, West Jason, to the fire training center. The property is not in use or plans to use the property. The committee voted to recommend beaming the property in surplus. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the committee's recommendation to approve the resolution for you, clearing property five point six acres, Bradley County property located U Street, a portion of which is known as old waterable elementary to a property, Alton Park, mountain partial number oh seven four eight C, zero zero three, dash zero zero, a surplus property, not the rising county mayor to offer for sale a portion of this property by public bid.
Commissioner Gilbert on the second, open for discussion. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I guess with this word for sale by public bid inherent in this is surplus part. I was under pressure, it's two steps. Surplus, get that done, and then put it up for bid, but we're kind of doing this all in one big.
Yes, um.
So we're.
We're doing it together, and the, the resolution, um, does both things. Um, you certainly could do it as separate steps, and we've done it both ways. We have done it where we do step one, which is surplus it, and then step two is usually though, when we know we're going to go ahead and do the public offering, we do them together. There have been times where we've surplus it, and then later you decide to sell it um, and go through the process. So you, you can do it either way. This resolution as drafted is doing both pieces.
We're getting two for one, surplus and public sale. Mayor, um, we don't have any idea what the value is. I mean, we're not going to put a minimum bid on this, just so if somebody comes in there and says X amount, it still comes back to us for approval. Um, but we don't have any idea what a, a price tag on it. We didn't appraise it or anything like that, so we'll take, we'll just use the option to say no if, if we deem it's not worthy.
That's the easiest thing to do. See what we get, and it'll come back to you to accept or reject.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Mayor, is there any way we could have a public auction as actually an auction there instead of bids to where it sells to the highest bidder? No, you don't. They charge ten percent to the buyer.
You can do it either way. Uh, seal bids.
That's fair market value.
Seal bids or a public auction, however you want to do it.
I like to see a public auction. That's fair market value. That's the best way of finding out exactly what it's worth, and you just sell it.
It's going to be worth whatever they offer at that auction as same as it will be in the sealed bid, so.
Well, I don't know that, because I've seen property that's supposed to bring two hundred thousand dollars down here down the road. They just sold a house the other day.
two hundred thousand dollars down here down the road. They just sold a house the other day. It brought three sixty.
I think, uh, to the county attorney, would that not require a substitute motion?
It would, yes.
Do you want to put that?
I would like to make a substitute motion that we have a auction, live auction at the property to sell it.
Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, this may be to you. So in a, in a public auction or setting like that, we don't necessarily get to ask the question in terms of if someone bids, we would have an understanding or a knowledge of what they plan to do with the bid on any surplus properties. Is that correct? Whereas in a public auction, it's up to whoever buys it can do according to what the zoning is.
At the public auction, we would have to require them to give us the option to no-sell it.
Yes.
If there, okay. Any other discussion on the, oh, I'm looking, still looking for a second.
I've got a second over here.
I'm sorry.
I'll second it for Scotty.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hughes opened the second. Now let's go for discussion. Commissioner Ledford.
I was just gonna ask a question about the, uh, it says portion on here. It still means five point six five acres, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the substitute motion that would require a public auction? Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
No.
Cry.
No.
Blake.
No.
Collins.
No.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Goins.
No.
Slater.
No.
Mason.
No.
Ledford.
No.
Rogers.
No.
Winters.
No.
Beatty.
No.
Hughes.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? It's two in favor and twelve opposed.
Commissioner Thompson.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll another thing that we discussed at, at that meeting was, uh, oh, we gotta vote? Okay, sorry.
Now what was the?
The original motion was to declare it. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. Just to clarify, original motion was to, to, to deem it surplus, so if we vote yes, we're deeming it surplus. If we vote no, we're not deeming it surplus, correct? So it switches this time?
Yes, and it's actually, you're approving the resolution that is in front of you as written, which does both pieces, deeming it surplus and then authorizing the mayor to offer it for public bid by sealed bid.
Anyone else? All right, call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake. Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
No.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
No.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
No.
Hughes.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? It's eleven in favor and three opposed.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Thompson, you're sealed.
Okay, next thing we went and we discussed, uh, we done a little discussion on it was, uh, annexation by resolution. Referendum, I wanted to say resolution by referendum. Uh, annexation by referendum. And, uh, the, the city manager was here and, uh, and of course we gave him an earful, but, uh, anyway, uh, we didn't come to know, no, uh, recommendation on that whatsoever, what we could do that, uh, except we might have to go back to our legislation to get anything done on that. So anyway, that's something, uh, that we'll do in the future and, uh, and of course I'm sure there's a lot of people live out in the county that's interested in, uh, what the answer would be on that or what we could do. So we'll leave that to a later date. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gilbert.
Um, Oswald in the fourth district have nothing to report. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Winters.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Oswald is in the seventh, uh, the sixty highway is progressing very smoothly, uh, from uh, Cleveland, uh, the Cleveland Middle School all the way, uh, to, uh, Paul Huff. We see a lot of, of very good progress that's happening there and I think we're ready to move uh, more, more, uh, to the roads that can move even faster as they get past that, that movement. Our community went through a very challenging, difficult loss of a life, uh, this, this week. The young, young lady lived, we've all lived the journey with this family. And, uh, I think we should applaud the city with spirit and the county with faith. It was a difficult time. It's a time of grieving, but at the same time it was a great celebration in what this family had done for this young lady through these four and a half years. Uh, whether you were able to go by and sign a book and walk through the line or whether you got in a car and drove behind the family as they went, uh, to her resting place or stood alongside of the road to, uh, just be with that family. Uh, they, they modeled for us. How a Christian family should deal with, with tragedy and with challenges. And, uh, they should be in our prayers, but go up to Erin and, and Sarah and talk to them when you get a chance. Uh, they're the most uplifting people in, in tough times that you could ever be around. But let them know that in these days ahead, uh, that you're with them too. Cause they're going back to their house today. That little girl is not there. And I have six grandchildren. And, uh, I've, I've, I could hardly get out of my car and go in because of the grief I felt for them. And you all had the same, same feeling. But within that, uh, let's share, share life with them. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report. District three's doing well.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake.
Also doing well in the third. Thank you.
Commissioner Alfred.
That's good.
Commissioner Hughes.
Chairman, I have nothing today.
Commissioner Beck.
Nothing for.
Okay, thank you. No unfinished business that I'm aware of. Can I get a vote or a recommendation on the approval of the agenda, please? Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Thompson, open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Bill Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you remember in our last meeting, the mayor presented this American Rescue Plan, uh, amendment, uh, to be needed to be done by this commission. Uh, basically we're extending the timeframe for the construction of the Bradley County Community Services Agency Child Shelter or, or Homeless Shelter. Uh, so, uh, I'm making this in the form of a motion. You could see the entire American Rescue Plan Acts Funds Amendment on page forty-seven and through forty-eight.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers on the second. Come, I got, got one already. Thank you. I got a couple of backups here. Open for discussion.
I'll, let me just add, Mr. Chairman, if you will.
Yes.
Uh, I did talk with Demetrius Ramsey today, uh, there on go. Uh, they've had, uh, a company in to look at plans again to make sure the plans are appropriate and feels very confident that they will be able to move forward, uh, with this, uh, very, uh, much earlier than the deadline. So it looks like it's moving on. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake. Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Agenda item B, we'll go to Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from forestry, agricultural, residential or FAR district to general commercial, which is C two district. Property located at Harrison Pike, uh, and identified by tax map forty, uh, parcel one twenty-four. These can be seen on pages forty-nine through fifty. Mr. Chairman, it's noted to, or maybe noted that it was not recommended for approval by the planning commission.
Thank you very much. We'll now go into a public hearing